Committee meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Roll call. Mayor Protem Villegas.
Present.
Councilmember Solorio.
Present.
Councilmember Iglesias. Acting City Manager Stephen Mendoza.
Present.
Executive Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Services Agency Lisa Rudloff.
Present.
San Ana Unified School District members. Board of Education President Valerie Amescua.
Present.
Board of Education Member John Palacio.
Here.
San Ana Unified School District Staff Stephanie Phillips Superintendent.
Present.
Yabo Cora.
Thank you, sir. If everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Sandoval, do we have any speaker and request cards for the public comments?
Mayor Protem Villegas, we have one public speaker for item number two this evening.
Okay, but none under the general public comments?
None, sir.
Okay, thank you. So we'll call on him when we get to item number two. Right now, we're going to go ahead and start with item number one on the agenda, the approval of the minutes for the June 11th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion?
A move, approval.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I have a question.
Question.
Okay. On the second page, there's, it states that there's going to be a technical advisory committee that meets monthly with the district. Was that something that ever came to fruition or who was meeting?
Yes. There was a technical advisor, although I was, pardon me. Oh, sorry. Lisa Rudloff, Executive Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services. There was a technical advisory committee and we meet, I believe, on a monthly basis.
And who's part of that committee from the city side?
Myself, Mr. Ron Ono, Jeannie Gerardo, Enrique Marban, Orin Williams, and Juan Lara.
Okay. Because it wasn't stated here, so that came after the meeting then?
Yes. Have you been meeting, were you meeting prior to that?
Yes, it's a monthly meeting. That's been going for several years, so it's not, it wasn't due to the last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? No opposition? Motion passes. We're going to go on to item number two, which is Godenas High School Centennial Park Joint Use Agreement. And we have one speaker, Mr. Chris Schmidt. Two speakers, thank you very much. We'll start off with Mr. Chris Schmidt. Who's got the time?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm the president of the Winter Village Neighborhood Association, which is located directly across the street from Centennial Park. When the school district and the city proposed building Godenas in Centennial Park, there were a lot of meetings held, input from the community. And one of the things that the school district agreed to back in 2002 is that they would never build a fence inside the park and to make sure it was open to the public. I just want to make sure that we keep that agreement in place to make sure that the park is open under the deed from the National Park Service. It says it has to be open park space. I just want to make sure we do that. Secondly, one of my issues is that the school is located here, that's the joint use, but students are running around the lake at PE. One of my concerns is if a student, if something happened with a student over here in the park, I believe the city of San Ana would be legally responsible. We have a lot of uneven concrete from the sidewalks right there. They're currently in the process of being repaired. I know of two incidents where people fallen and hurt, gotten hurt. So if students are running around the lake and they trip and fall, the parents hold our city responsible would be the school district. So lastly, there is a parking structure there. You're not allowed to charge for parking under the existing joint use. I don't believe the school district has a written policy allowing you to charge for parking at any school district facilities, but earlier this year, there was a CIF playoff there and they charged $5 for parking. They used about 50 parking spaces in the park. Three people attending a soccer game there got charged $5. When you entered the park, it looked like everybody had to pay $5. I hope you've looked into that. I understand the technical advisory committee has looked into that as well. We're not supposed to charge for parking in the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Barbara Lemire.
Councilmembers, they're coming up. I know they're speaking now, but there may be some value for the audience members to also participate after there's discussion amongst staff or others. I just want to, you know, let the audience and my colleagues know that we ought to create that opportunity because if not, they're kind of making comments based off of things that may or may not have occurred.
Thank you for your comment.
Excuse me, I'm Barbara Lavier. I live in Windsor Park, across from Centennial. Been there 54 years in June. I've watched a lot going on over there between adding the school, the college, and the city. And it's a lot of confusion. It's just a go around, go around about fencing and such. It's dark over there at night. It is dangerous. The kids do run around the lake. It's very dangerous. It's a two-lane road. We've got to be conscious of that. And I'd like to see the city and the school district particularly realize that that is our park and we need to all get together and maintain it and make equal use. Be fair about it. No fencing should be allowed whatsoever. And who's controlling the kids and seeing and making their safe, making it safe for them to run around? That needs to be looked at. Kids coming home, walking through the park, getting their phones stolen and stuff like that. Someone's got to be in charge. I believe it should be the schools, school district. But I wish you'd look into it and I wish everybody would just get along. This is one city, lots of schools. Let's get together and work this out, make it equal and quit bringing this up every few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joyce. I can't read the writing.
We're going to elect you an officer.
I see, there's no, no item number on there. Okay, very good. We'll wait, we'll wait till the end. Okay. So back to item two, we have staff. Discussion regarding security and policy in Godenas High School. I brought this item forward because I wanted to make sure that, wanted to hear what the school district had to say regarding their plans for security. And I wanted to make sure that the city was on board, knowing what the school district's plans were, so we can also help out because those are our residents that attend those schools. And has there been any changes or do we have, I understand we have one police officer assigned to the school and then the rest are public safety or do we have a number on that?
Sure. We have, at Godenas High School, we have one SRO, which is a post.
Certified.
Certified, thank you, officer. We have DSOs assigned to that school as well, as well as there should be some patrol that's done within the park itself, which obviously is, the city could speak to more profoundly. With respect to the plans for that site and how to secure that school, if you recall, the last time we met in September, we had some real discussions around what the possibilities were for us to work jointly and in conjunction to be able to secure the school during the daytime while the kids are in school, so that if the school was to experience a lockdown, if there was some activity in the park, that we would be able to make sure that the students were locked down and secure on campus. At this point, we've had some proposals that have been brought forward to technical advisory as well as to this, to this group. We've had conversations with the National Parks as well as your staff. And so at this point, our proposal is still our proposal. We've yet to, and I can't speak to what the last technical assistance committee came up with, but with respect to this group, we've not changed directions and we're still very, very interested in being able to secure that site during the daytime and then open that up during public hours.
I want to kind of summarize a little bit. We have four district security officers on our property during different times during the day when our schools are open. We have a school police officer, which is called an SRO. Okay? So we, our obligation, we do provide. The question is, what does the city do in terms of providing security for the park? My understanding is that you, you have a park attendant, a half of position or park ranger, whatever you want to call it. It used to be police officers, but these are civilians. So you have a part-time position and that's assigned, that's assigned district citywide. And then you have a corporal who is a motorcycle officer who actually does traffic control, but periodically he would be assigned. And this is 24/7, seven days a week, so.
Do you mind if we hear from your chief?
Yeah.
Chief Smith would like to make any comments on this item.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
You'll also be asking San Ana PD to make.
Absolutely. That's why we have that.
Appreciate it.
It'd be great to hear from them both.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Anastasia Smith, Chief of Police for San Ana Unified School Police. So a little bit more background, everything that Board Member Palacio and Superintendent Phillips shared with you is currently our operating procedures on a daily basis. The SRO and four full-time district safety officers in conjunction with the principal, Principal Jesse Church, and with my team established the priorities for Godenas with respect to operationally, what kinds of concerns we have in order to protect the students during the school day and after-school activities as well. I can share with you that Godenas is a very porous campus and the exact example that we provided you in our meeting last year about possibly having an incident that would be initiated in the park area could impact the safety of our students. And that in fact occurred in mid-August. Students were coming back from grabbing some food for a practice for their sports and they saw what they believed to be a man moving through the park with a rifle. So the janitor, the custodian at Godenas received that report from one of the students. It was reported to school police. We worked very closely with San Ana Police Department and responded to that call. Turned out it wasn't a rifle, but certainly it definitely put our students at risk because of our inability to secure the areas that were being used by the athletes after hours, which at that time were football players. So we actually had hypothesized about a scenario and then that exact scenario occurred. I can also tell you that in one, a one-year period, we responded to over 590 radio calls for assistance at Godenas in the immediate area. That was just school police. And those calls consisted of what you might anticipate here in San Ana, which were calls for either trespassing, somebody under the influence, indecent exposure, drunken public, which are not calls that are involving our students as being possible suspects in this behavior. It's actually the adults in the nearby area. And then we had roughly 607 incident, 607 at Godenas and 590 that involved potential calls with homelessness and those types of crimes that impacted our students.
Is that a total for one year?
Yes, sir. So 590 calls that, and those calls again, just to recap for you, are the calls that involve trespassing, which in looking at our trespass calls, there was 134 of those. Those are generally the calls where suspicious persons are in the area. School staff sees them, realizes that perhaps the students may be at risk and calls it into school police. So it includes the trespass, it includes the after-hours burglar alarm calls, it includes drunken public, under the influence, emotionally disturbed individuals, and indecent exposure calls.
Now, out of the 590 that are done, are they, let's say, four people calling about the same individual or is it 590 different?
They can be, but I'm only reporting the 590 incidents. I'm not reporting the phone calls. So that was the 590 incidents.
Got it. Thank you, Chief. My colleagues or anyone have questions for the Chief?
Hey, Chief, you mentioned that it's, it's for trespassing and it's for indecent, I guess, exposure or whatever it is.
Correct.
But where exactly are the, I guess, the incidents occurring? Is it inside the school or is it at the park site?
The majority of the incidents that I was referring to, other than the burglar alarm calls, because that specifically is for campuses and our campus buildings, but the majority of those calls are on the perimeter. So it would be the park, the areas immediately adjacent to the school, the access parking lot, the sidewalks on the north, south, east and west, anything where a staff person, because remember, the general public usually isn't calling school police when they see an issue with homelessness or trespassing. They're usually calling the San Ana Police Department. So those calls were just the calls that I pulled out that came directly to us. And it's usually those immediate areas around the perimeter of the school and the areas where the kids are maybe engaged in physical education or in after-school sports.
My concern is, and it was when I was on the school, you know, on the school board, was that I believe there is a, I would say, a lack of supervision from the district side on our students for, you know, when they go out there, PE and all that. I don't see any difference on the, on Godenas that I would see at the charter schools. I mean, the charter schools once, I mean, because my understanding is your, the facility for the school district, it is secured and it is gated, right?
The school is gated, but remember, the students use those areas which are depicted in your math to go out to PE. Now, I can tell you, I specifically have done random checks and patrol checks during those PE classes and I have found the physical education instructors to be, to be very proactive as far as monitoring their students. What some individuals may encounter is that there may be students that have left class, they have a half-day, they're arriving late. And they, I encountered that myself, two students that were sitting by the tree and they had not started school for the day yet. So it wasn't that they were doing anything wrong or a teacher wasn't monitoring their conduct, they hadn't even started school. So, and both Principal Church and myself, we have gone out on, and walked around his campus and collaboratively, we've determined the important points for those DSOs to be and to be walking, to be proactive, to be visible. And that was a direct action that the board took. So they increased the staffing. After that last meeting we had a year ago, they increased the allocation for DSOs at Godenas from three to four, another full-time position specifically allocated. Students are students, kids are kids. They can always find a way to maybe veer off of where they're supposed to be, but in all of my random checks, certainly the PE teachers were out there and they were monitoring the students.
Okay, because I've had concerns and have had issues with the students. And I, you know, I think just, just recently, we received an email of, you know, students going into the bird sanctuary and just totally, you know, being very disrespectful to, to that area. So for me, I don't, I wouldn't support something of fencing the common ground because like, you know, like it was stated, that is a community. So if that's something that we're going to be talking about, then I'll be more than happy to give my input.
Right, thank you. Let's also hear from the San Ana Police Department.
While we're waiting for them to come up, I'd just like to reiterate that our certificated teachers, highly-trained teachers as well as our DSOs are providing that supervision during those times, as well as walk-on coaches who are, who are doing supervision as well.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Good evening. Eric Paulson, Deputy Chief of Police, Field Operations Bureau at the San Ana Police Department. Just to piggyback on what the Chief just mentioned, we also conducted calls for service research. We, in 2018, had 317 calls for service at Centennial Park. Out of those 317 calls, roughly a third of them resulted in reports being taken. Out of 317 calls for service, a third of them were initiated by San Ana Police Department, meaning that it was a car stop, it could have been a foot beat, it could have been a patrol check. Much like the Chief just mentioned in terms of types of reports, they vary. There's probably about 20 different types of calls that we've responded to, probably about 15 or so, maybe 20 different reports that we've taken out of, out of the park. In terms of, just to follow up on, on the park ranger program, it certainly isn't as robust as what it used to be. Hiring and retention of the park ranger program continues to be a challenge for us. We do have a full-time park ranger. He also happens to be a special events motor, so he's not a motor that duels as a park ranger. He's, he's the supervisor of the park ranger program. We also have a part-timer that works on the weekends, so just for clarification. In terms of anything else pertaining to site security, we have not had any major incidents in terms of violent crime that, in the last year, that have been reported and/or documented at Centennial Park. Any other questions that you might have in terms of the police department's response to the park, I'll do my best to respond to those.
Board Member Amescua.
Thank you. Thank you. So you wanted to clarify the park ranger and I thank you for that information.
Yes, ma'am.
So you have a full-time park ranger, which is your motor officer, correct?
No, he's, he is.
He's a full-time park ranger.
He is a full-time park, yeah. Corporal Ketcherisky.
Hi. So now, does the corporal go through the entire city or just Centennial Park?
No, all, he's responsible for all parks in the city.
Correct. So how many parks are there in the city that he goes around and checks on, supervises on?
There are, there are nearly 50 parks in the city. There are certainly some parks that require more attention than others in the city. Centennial is certainly in the top end of parks that require, that do receive that attention.
And your part-time, how many hours or what does he or she do?
He works on the weekends and he's working anywhere between 16 and 20 hours over the weekend.
So you have one full-time for 50 parks and one part-time, weekends only, to assist?
Yes, dedicated solely to the parks. That does not include, in fact, the vast majority of the calls for service that we responded to. The vast majority of the reports that were taken were taken by our police officers, the district police officers in that area. So yes, we have one and a half personnel responsible or dedicated to the parks, but we have all of patrol who also respond at the parks.
So is it, and you probably have a very extensive career with San Ana PD, correct? Many years?
Several years, yes.
I don't want to age you, so many years. Kind of like Mr. Palacio, right? Many years.
Let's not go, let's not go that far.
So would you say that, would you say that people always call for police assistance when they're in that area or that park and they need service or they need assistance? Would you say they call regularly? Or they call, or are they afraid to call or they feel that they're not going to get a response? And no disrespect, I'm just asking.
No, no, fair question, fair question. To give you an answer, I don't, I believe that we have unreported crimes and Centennial Park is, is no different than any other part of the city.
Correct. That's what I, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Solorio.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I think there, usually at these meetings, there's frustration with folks around the table and the, and the audience and staff. Maybe we need to meet more frequently. I think part of what happens is we do these meetings, issues arise, maybe at other levels there's communication and work, but it never gets reported back. So, you know, back in September, whenever we met, we had a very long discussion about several issues at Godenas High School and we get no report back. I mean, I was hoping that's what this item was about, but, you know, maybe both staffs, if we're prepared, can, can speak to the work that's been done since then. But I really feel like there were three to five very crystallized things that were going to be researched, there was going to be follow-up to make sure that people are on the same page. And then that way, we're not always having the same ongoing conversation. If we're not at this meeting prepared to do that, maybe at, at the next meeting, but we owe it to the community and ourselves to report out on the findings of that work. Also, I do want to share that kind of similar issues are with, you know, the college district and we do have an ad hoc committee that's Councilwoman Iglesias, myself, and Peña Loza. And maybe too, we may, might need something similar that can meet a little bit more regularly and doesn't need to be as big or as formal, but just so that we have better communication. With respect to, you know, public safety and issues at the park, I mean, I'm embarrassed that the reality of most issues of loitering, homelessness, et cetera, is the city's responsibility. We well know that we're woefully short on officers. Just to give you some, some high-level points of recent, recent data, last, at the beginning of this fiscal year essentially, we had about 51 funded vacancies in the police department. That number has grown to 66, about half or more are police officers. We, you know, have a park ranger, but he's really a supervisor, so only so much that could be done. We really need to modernize our PD, have more technology as well, work with stakeholders to figure out what the needs are through, you know, real community-oriented policing, a lot of work that needs to be done. And it's now really starting to affect 911 police response time on priority calls. I got a email from a parent this morning saying that near Grand, they were going through this area and there was a homeless person there, creating an issue, creating problems. The parent didn't feel comfortable enough taking the kid to school on time, so that student then was tardy, called 911 PD. No one ever showed up, you know, they waited at least 30 minutes. And that situation repeats itself every day. And, you know, we got last calendar year about 10,000 calls for service, I think just homeless-related. So imagine all the calls that don't get reported. And so definitely we have a lot of, you know, security and other issues at this campus, but it's, it's citywide and we need a better handle on it. I know later on, we're talking specifically about homelessness issues, so we can chat about it then, but I know that there are some parents from Godenas High School and the principal that may or may not have updates regarding Godenas High School and the conversation from last time and whatever this conversation is. But there just is a lot of confusion just because we never really address core issues, but yet we're always talking about it. So kind of mainly just venting, but also call maybe for more frequent meetings of some nature, either in this formal setting or as an ad hoc, but we definitely need more communication and more work needs to be done.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Solorio. Mayor Protem Villegas, as you, as you recall, we had this conversation about having more frequent meetings so that we can address issues. So I think we should definitely talk about that because it has been almost a year, how long has it been since last September?
There was an election going on, so I think.
Well, there's always going to be an election, right? So next year, there's another election. So I would hope that we don't use that as a reason why because it hurts our constituents that you serve and the kids and the families that we serve. So there's always going to be an election. And I'm asking about the server, the calls, the responsive calls. No disrespect to anybody, but the same thing, we have to find a way to protect our kids and I know we're going to talk about our homeless, the homeless shelter in a little bit, but I would love to meet more frequently and if it's, you know, every other month, I'm, I'm fine with it, or once a month, but we have to meet and get things done, not just meet for the sake of meeting, because then it's a waste of everybody's time. So if we come and actually be prepared prior to the meeting and have some answers and then we can move forward, you wouldn't have a problem from us doing that at all. We would, we would not mind that one bit.
I'm in favor of meeting every other month and I think everyone here at the table on both sides is in favor of that.
And can we select people to join us and we can, decision-makers so we can get things done?
So does everyone agree that to have our staff to go ahead and set up a date and time?
Yes.
For, okay. And is there anything else?
Is Mondays a better day for you guys? Because we have, both of us have meetings on the Tuesdays, so Monday evenings are probably the best day to be, to meet.
Mondays evenings, fine with me as long as we all give enough notice.
Okay, great. We're good with that, Senator?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. If anyone else has a comment, if not, I want to say something before we move on to the next.
You know, one more thing, I was talking about police response time and there was one, one last little bit of information. So I had our PD give response time for the past five years and response time on 911 calls, priority calls, meaning the most serious ones, it's now a minute and a half longer essentially. It used to be about six and a half minutes. Now it's, you know, it's creeping over eight minutes and it's not good. We need to bring those numbers back down to at least six minutes and hopefully lower. And, you know, I think both folks know I'm a big fan of measurements and metrics. And, you know, I think both folks know I'm a big fan of measurements and metrics, because, you know, we can't manage what we, you know, aren't measuring, and this is an important area.
I would just say, ma'am Protam, that Mr. Solario is bringing up a good point, but I would like us to remember that many officers are retiring, and so across the state, it's hard for people to hire, because as you hire one, five go out. And so it's hard for us, it's hard for you guys as well, and so we understand that. But there is a way to work together, and I know we have, being that I live in the city, I really don't call nine-one-one unless I'm dying, hopefully, or, but I don't want it, because, yeah, response time is definitely not good, but it's not their fault, it's just-
But other agencies comparable or larger, like Anaheim and the County of Orange, they essentially have zero on their vacancy list, and there's many things we can do, and that's a whole other conversation.
Well, there are officers across the state that are retired, and so a lot of agencies are having challenges, so, thank you.
I would like to say that I believe that Chief Smith and Chief Valentine have a very good working relationship, and I'm very proud to say that. Also, you know, Councilmember Solario and I both sat on the Public Safety Committee for a long time. We understand that the police department, Santa Ana Police Department averages about four hundred and eighteen calls per a twenty-four hour shift, of course, about ten thousand calls a year, it's a lot. We're operating at half of the officers that we're supposed to, at point zero eight, I believe we should be at, at point one-nine for, or point oh-nine, I believe. So we are very, very short on that. I'm very proud of the officers, that they're overworked, and it was a high volume of calls, and Councilmember Solario is right, you know, the response time has gone up a little bit, and it's a, you know, we all live here. We all live here, and it's a reality that we're facing. We are working on doing the best we can. Tomorrow night is the Public Safety Committee meeting here in this room, and we're also going to address the, get an update on the Park Ranger program, but that's very, very difficult, is that right, Deputy Chief? Very difficult to recruit right now. And it's hard enough to get police officers, regular police officers, to join, and one of the reasons that a lot of people smoke drugs in this state, because, you know, we, you know, the state has now legalized marijuana, and, you know, it's very, very tough to get qualified folks. And one, go ahead, Councilmember Iglesias.
Just have a quick question for staff from the city. We're talking about security and all that. Have we decided on security cameras at Godenas, do we, I mean, at Godenas, at Centennial? Do we have an update on where that's at?
Yes, we have one more camera, I believe, being installed, two more cameras installed, and one is near the skate park. Can I have Mr. Ron Ono come up and explain that?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Because that would also help us with this issue.
Ron Ono, Admin Services Manager, Parks and Recreation. We have plans for two security cameras at the skate park that's going to be installed by the Orange County Water District. Right now, we're working with Siemens to see if there's possibility of tying those two security cameras into our major security camera system that's just going to be installed at Windsor Park and the various other park sites that we have, because right now it's a standalone camera, so we need to tie it to get it to the system. That camera is going to be installed probably in about late summer, early fall.
And you said there was two, one at the skate park, and where's the other one at?
They're both at the skate park.
Oh, they're both at the skate park? Okay. We're not thinking of putting anything closer to where the fields are at, or anything like that?
No, it wasn't planned on in our agreement with Orange County Water District.
Okay.
Mr. Uno, why skate, why skate park? Why would you put two cameras there?
Because of the activity that's happening around the skate park, the, at that time, it was decided to raise the fencing around the skate park and to provide security. In fact, the Orange County Water District is rebuilding the restroom at that location, and in that rebuilding of that particular restroom, we're providing an office facility for staffing.
What, is it already set, I mean, is it already negotiated that the two cameras are going to be there? Is there opportunity for conversations, maybe?
It's already been negotiated on.
Okay. Is that something like with the school district that we could partner with a camera? No, not at all? I just thought I would bring it up.
Mr. Uno, you said that the skate park's going to be fenced?
The skate park is already fenced with decorative fencing. In our agreement with the Orange County Water District, they are to raise that fence up to six feet.
So the fencing's for security purposes, right?
No, that, actually, the original fence was installed to prevent people from falling into the skate area.
But it's-
But, yeah, but the concern now is, you know, security.
I noticed, Mr. Vegas, that in here, most of the people, most of the staff weren't here, so you don't have the history. I would suggest that Chief Smith, she provided an excellent presentation at the last meeting where she, our plans, we are putting security cameras, new ones, on our properties, and we're putting the exits and the entrances, that whole program, and that's something you guys should be exposed to, and that will answer your questions about what we're doing besides staffing. Our school bond is allowing us to put security measures relative to cameras, and so I think you should update our, their staff in terms of where we are with that, because we actually had maps, and we had diagrams from a safety, both chiefs would understand what the presentation was about, so that would, I think would be helpful.
So maybe we can add it to our next meeting.
We already had the presentation.
With the update, with the latest?
No.
It'll be on the next meeting?
No.
For us?
For us, especially for new staff.
For new staff, yeah. All right, we're going to move on to item number three, which is Civic Center Act. Do we have staff speaking on that?
Ms. Protam, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So our next meeting, which is going to be in two months-
Two months.
So we want to have concrete items to discuss.
An update on the cameras.
Right, so with-
But I think we want to be thoughtful about what those items are, so we can brainstorm, but we should be thoughtful about what-
And that's what I was going to say, so in regards to Godenas, just so we're all on the same page, hopefully the, I don't know if the team's going to meet prior to the other team that's working on it, will you guys be meeting, Lisa, prior to our next meeting? Your technical team?
Yes, next meeting would be June twenty-four, so, I mean, prior to-
Okay, so then-
So we may get a point to miss prior to the meeting, no?
So that way we come with actual issues and items to discuss, and then some goals to work on, not just to come and talk. All right, thank you.
Okay, very good. I agree. Let's see, was that, is this your item?
Yeah.
Councilmember Iglesias, item number three.
Okay, so for the Civic Center Act, I just wanted to, I guess, just have a clear understanding on how it works at Godenas, you know, having the joint use agreement for facilities. I want to know what it is that the cities, I would guess, it's responsible for, and for what, you know, the hours of operations and all that, when we're responsible for the facilities at Godenas, and vice versa, when the, when the school district has, I guess, has jurisdiction on, to schedule events and stuff. My question or my concern comes into also cost, cost to the community and cost to, to the, I guess, the visitors. This goes specifically to a, to an event that happened at Godenas, and it was for, I don't know what event it was, but I know that individuals were being charged to enter Godenas and park, so, and I believe this was, they may, it may have been addressed already with your committee, but if I just could have an update on, you know, how that's being addressed, are we charging our community members to use our park, or, I mean, who's handling that?
Yes, we are, we are not charging our community members to utilize our facilities. There was a CIF championship, and there was charging for parking, and there was confusion, and some, some of the community members were charged, if there was, there was a practice going on, they were charged for parking. But we will, it is not in the, it is silent in the joint use agreement about that, and so I think that needs to be discussed, if there's ever an amendment to this joint use agreement, to make it very specific as to who's charging, who's allowed to charge, and in the process and protocol. So, at this point, there is no charged, charges for parking going on.
So is that something that we could bring up in our next meeting to discuss, that MOU? And, if I may, because I know I personally was there, and I was seeing kids at the entrances, charging, and I believe it was like five dollars, and then I kind of went around, drove around, and went the other way, and then when I parked by, you know, by our facilities, by where the Parks and Rec is at, and then I was, I was just, I was just looking, and there were adults too, from the school district, that I won't name, but they were there, and for me, it was kind of, it was very disappointing to see that they were charging people to use our parks that we as a city don't charge. So my question would be, is like, what happens with that money? Who, who does that money go to? Does it go to the city? Does it go to the district?
Well, and a quick question to you, so, exactly what happened, C I, a third party, the CIF?
Yes.
They had, they had an event at the school, and then who was charging?
The school district was charging, yes.
I see.
No, it wasn't, I can name it, it was Mr. Church was there. He was there charging at the entrance.
Mayor Protam.
Dr. Phillips.
Please. Ms. Iglesias is correct, there was an event at the school, it was a CIF championship or playoff round, and the school had use of the facility, per the joint use agreement, to the extent that all other high schools in the state of California use those events to try to further their programs. Godenas Booster Club actually did charge for parking, because the school was actually utilizing that parking structure. That's not unsimilar to any other school in Santa Ana or the state of California. The joint use agreement is silent on that piece of it, which is what Ms. Rudolph just talked about, and if there's going to be an amendment to that agreement, then I think we ought to have that conversation. But to the extent that the school was doing something that was unethical, I guess I would have to stand up for that principal and for that school community, and they're trying to augment their programs for their students, and I support it. So, to the extent that we need clarity, then we should have some clarity, but I think that the school did what they were supposed to do.
Councilmember? Councilmember Solario?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, as I've said before, I'm always at Godenas, because, you know, I have kids over there, just one right now, but that day, I was out there dropping off Diego at about the time that folks were coming in, and for me, any time that I see a school, city, or other government employee work on a weekend, I say more power to them, and I'm thankful. I did see Principal Church there, and, you know, he was doing his best with others to welcome people in, and, you know, they had the parking structure, and it is common, and again, the parking thing too was one of the items that was discussed at the meeting several months ago, where there was going to be clarity on that, and it creates frustration like this, because no one ever follows up to say yes, or no, or how to do it, or how to communicate it, so I think it is frustrating that this has turned into an issue when it shouldn't have been. We do have Principal Church here, if, you know, we did want to hear from him, but again, it seems at the very minimum like the issue in the agreement is silent, so nothing was done wrong, and, you know, if we could have city or other folks work on weekends, get on their own time, or evenings, you know, it's tough, because we all already put a lot of hours in, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, blame any employees for, you know, for putting in overtime for their kids.
There's another way of looking at it. It's like equivalent of us charging to use our gym for a basketball game. That parking structure was built by the school district, costs between eight to ten million dollars. All the improvements at, it used to be just, if those who've been here for a while, it used to be dirt. So we built the, the baseball fields, the track, and football field, whatever's left of it, and the, all the other amenities to go with it. So we spent an excess of, just to finish the park, extensive lot of money. And so I think people need to understand that, that we built it with taxpayers, with our monies, it wasn't the city. The city didn't put one penny into it.
Director Rudolph?
Yes, Lisa Rudolph, Executive Director here, six months. I understand there is a joint use agreement. Mr. Williams, very thoughtful person, we all sit around, talk at the table, but this particular event was inappropriate. I was told that there was no parking, there was going to be charging, no charging for parking whatsoever, and then the next thing I know is there's charging for parking, so I think that we need to work this out in the future. You all can decide if you want to charge, not a problem, we just want to carry out the rules and the joint use agreement. That was some miscommunication and confusion, and so we need to get better at that, but it caused some issues, but let's move forward, and discuss this and make it the way that you all would like for it to be.
You know, and probably the better word is miscommunication, I don't know that inappropriate is the right word, if the agreement was silent.
We're just going to go ahead and put this on the next meeting.
So do we raise our hand when we want to speak? Because I just want, I want to make sure we're following the rules.
Yes.
So, yeah, I thank you.
Board member Mesquita?
I wouldn't use the word inappropriate, and we don't come here and call out city staff, because we can, but we don't. And so I want to be really clear when we meet, we're not here to attack school district staff or city staff, I'm not here to tell you that I called nine-one-one because there was a naked homeless man on my street, Santa Ana PD didn't respond, I handled it myself and my family, so we don't want to do that, that's not what these meetings are about. So if there's an issue, I agree with Jose, Councilmember Solario, we meet more often, and we come to the table, and we discuss it, but I don't, and I don't appreciate our principals being called out, because Councilmember Solario is right, we have principals and staff that come on the weekends, they have families, and we had an event at Santa Ana High School from Thursday through Monday this weekend, people were there on Easter Sunday, so, and you have staff that are working weekends, and we thank them, we want to thank them. So I don't appreciate being, any of our staff being called out. The principal at Godenas is in a very interesting position, because he has to work with the city, work with the district, keep everybody happy, parents complain, community complains, we complain, they complain, so I wouldn't use the word inappropriate, and you can use any word you'd like, but as a board president, as a board member in this district, I'm going to say, the principal at Godenas is a very good principal, and it's a great school, and we really do need to come to the table at the next meeting and make some serious discussions. And I'm not here to have an argument with anybody and spend the next two hours talking about this subject, Mr. Councilman Vegas, I'm here to just say, I would really appreciate if we don't throw out names, because then we start this thing about, when we throw out names, you throw, and we're not going to do that, this side of the table's not going to do that.
Allow us.
Yeah, and I will retract the word inappropriate, I apologize, I was lied to, so let's just work together. So I don't, you know, I was, and so we need to move on.
You have a candidate to lie to?
Well, let's get, let's move the meeting forward. Councilmember Iglesias?
And I would have to agree with our director on parks, Lisa, and I just think it's very unfortunate that, you know, we have conversations, and we're hoping that, you know, staff will do, carry out the direction based on the meetings, and just to see it happen, it was very, yeah, I would say it's very inappropriate for that to happen, and I'm just hoping that we could put, like we're saying, put this on the next meeting, talk about it, and really squared it out to see if we're going, how we're going to move forward. But, and I do thank staff for working on the weekends. I thank staff for always being there and being our eyes and ears on what's happening in our, in our parks, I want to thank Ron Ono and Jeannie and, you know, and Dika, you guys are always there. And you guys can tell us what's happening from the city's perspective, and I know you guys will have, you know, from the district's perspective, but when we have this, this agreement that that's not going to happen, and it does happen, it's very frustrating, so.
We're going to push forward, that's what we're going to do, and I think we're going to have to time out on this, so we can, both sides could think about it, and we're going to talk at the next meeting, so we can all agree that this item will have to be brought up back at the next meeting. You in agreement with that?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that this is an item, but at least resolution on the other items. The Civic Center Act, everybody has it before them, this has been the law for a long time. This has been the law for a long time. Everybody, I think, treats it responsibly. I know via the school district, I've used it myself, even though they're very careful. So they dotted every INT, so it takes some effort. But, uh, I, I think they run the, the, the Civic Center Act program very responsibly.
Councilmember Iglesias.
And I just have another, just another request, I would say, from the school district. On Thursday, we had a scheduled meeting for the neighborhood association meeting. And, and I know that the school district is going through a new program in scheduling the, the civic center, the, I guess, the meetings that are, that are gonna be conducted at, at the facilities for the school district. And, um, we had a meeting scheduled with the neighborhood association, with Windsor Village. And, and it was scheduled a month and a half in advance. And then we just got notice that day saying that the, the, the facility wasn't gonna be available. So I was, you know, just, um, for us to be more, I would say, it's common courtesy to let us know in advance if, if there's a conflict in scheduling because that really would have put us at a disadvantage as, as a community if we, we had to move our meeting.
And I think that staff, um, recognized that there was a glitch in the communication and really, from my opinion, acted really swiftly to try to either find another space or try to make that space available. I'm glad that it worked out. Um, but I in no way want anybody to take away the fact or the thought that, um, staff did that intentionally. That, that truly was a mistake and I did research it myself. And, and, um, I, I have to say, Mr. Williams and his staff acted really swiftly to try to make sure that that was resolved. So it wasn't me, it was them.
And, and I'm never saying it's intentionally. I just think it's just the way the process, it's just a little convoluted.
Ms. Iglesias, I think Solario hit it pretty well. There's a lot of miscommunication through the things that you do, that you tell us the day before that you're gonna use facilities, uh, that we don't know anything about. Okay? It happens all the time with your staff. So it works both ways. I, you know, there are issues that, that we need to work out in terms of communication team, your staff, our staff. So you, you give one example, but we can give you a lot of examples too. Okay? I mean, you know, when, when you gotta rent facilities to run around the park, just to run. I mean, you know, or, I mean, that's, that's problematic, you know? Uh, or, or when you rent, you know, the issue of over-usage. We have a, a soccer field or football field, whatever you call it. It's overused. The city runs the hell out of it when you, when you rent it. And then we run the hell out of it when, when we, uh, when, when we use it. So there's over-usage. You, there's no downtime, you can't seat it. So you have to understand that there are issues. Well, the city's supposed to maintain it, but it can't because it's being overused. We're overusing it during the day and when we have school functions and you're using it, overuse it and you're, you know, and you're charging for it. Okay? Uh, you're renting, uh, to adults and, uh, more often than not. So, you know, it works kind of both ways and I, I think we're trying to work issues through. Uh, so, you know, uh, but the issue of usage, over-usage is a big issue with the city.
I still wanna clarify this item. Are we gonna speak about this at the next item or not? Because, um, I just wanna make sure that we don't have this happen again. You know, I do believe in communication, you know, uh, and increasing it. You know, we're not here with, uh, bad intention and no one's here for that. I wanna make sure that, well, I, both sides. And, uh, you know, uh, Board Member Amesco and I know each other very well. We, we wanna have a good working relationship. Remember, we always have this, uh, conversation. And, and, you know, there's a lot more items to address.
Oh, and thank you, Councilmember Vegas.
I really, really want to.
We do too.
Start over if we have to.
And we should because you have members that have been sitting here that don't have minutes from probably the last year, or maybe they didn't review them. As Councilman Solario said, we've been having the same discussions over and over and over. Even though he wasn't sitting at the table with you, he was in the audience.
Correct.
At all the meetings.
I remember.
As, you know, other board members have been. And so there's a lot of things. And so when you get new staff, they don't know what's happening. And I'm gonna, uh, agree probably with all of us here. We can go tit for tat all day long. That's not what we're here to do. I mean, we wanna get things resolved. And so, um, you know, it, again, the mechanism is not to say, you're doing it wrong or you're doing it wrong or we're doing it wrong or they're doing it wrong. It is to make sure that we're all serving our families, our students, and our constituents. And that's what we're here to do. So Godenas, as I stated earlier, and parents that are here, Councilman Solario can talk about, Godenas is a very unique school. It's a very unique school. And the day that we have a shooting or somebody gets hurt at that school site because nobody wanted to talk about protecting it and protecting our students and come to the table with something tangible, then, I'm sorry, many of us are gonna be screaming from the mountaintop that we asked for this. We asked for this and we asked, how many meetings have we been sitting here? So, uh, it's not a topic for tonight 'cause it's a long discussion, hopefully, where we can sit around the table and break some bread and have a very positive interaction without pointing fingers at each other. So if we're willing to do that, we're willing to come to the table. But if the next meeting, we come back and it's like, you did this, you did that, you doing this, then we're not gonna come because it serves no purpose and it's a waste of time. And I'd like to be at home with my family right now, but I'm here. We all are 'cause we're committed. So I don't think we're gonna resolve this issue tonight. We all know Civic Center very well. I believe Councilman Solario, myself, Mr. Palacio, and another councilman sat in meetings for, to rewrite the joint use, and then it disappeared. So we started it and then it like, three times, right? And then it is, 'cause there's no follow-through. So we have to start it, write it up, give it to the technical committee, let them write it up, come before us, and we move forward. But if we're gonna meet and do a tit for tat, then we're not coming. This school district's not coming to the table.
Councilmember. To answer your, to answer your question, I think rather than here trying to devise what the next agenda is for the next meeting or set of meetings, maybe we are, you know, respective, you know, key administrators, they can work out on what the agenda is and, and something that is, is significant for us to discuss. And then things that are actionable. Sometimes if it's just learning about things, we can learn things about things ourselves or ask questions of one or the other. But I think maybe via, uh, we have a new city manager starting on, on May 1. And so, you know, you know, we do apologize for, you know, the changes, but we think that they're good changes. So I think, you know, when she starts, uh, I would encourage, you know, a meeting between, uh, her, Christine Rich, and our new city manager coming in. Uh, she's from the Laguna de Gallo area where I'm at, you know, during, during the day. Uh, and if you could meet with her, you know, uh, Doctor, Doctor Phillips, that would be awesome and that would be a good.
We will let staff discuss and, um, I, I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
For this one, I think it would be a good idea for us to put it though on the next agenda, the amendment, especially for the, for the, for the charge and for the cost. I think that would be a good item to be discussing at the next meeting.
But, but what amendment? There's no proposal. There's, the, the Civic Center Act works fine. I mean, it sounds like maybe.
No, for the, for the charging that it's silent for the cost.
We're not gonna do an amendment.
Yeah, and that's one of many items, yeah.
We're not gonna do amendment by itself, it's gonna be the whole picture.
Yeah, so maybe both sides can work on whatever they believe.
This gets back to the longer list of one which is charging, yes.
Okay. Let's move on to item number four then, and that'll be Angel Park and Neil, uh, the tennis courts, Tennis Center.
So the question from, uh, from the district's perspective is what's, what is the plan for that, uh, park? Uh, at this point, we know we have some, some pending agreements and such, but, um, to the extent that those are, you know, vetted out, um, over the long term, what's the city's plan for that, that area? 'Cause right now it's got a lot of homeless, there's, there's a lot of disarray that happens there. So we were trying to get some information.
Dr. Williams, more, Dr. Phillips, more, more agreements. I, uh, um, let's see, if we can have, uh, I would like for, to direct our staff to speak with your staff and try to work this out. This is, um, this is a little new, unique. If we, can I get Mr. Ron Ono to come over and speak about this to my colleagues? Can you give a brief overview, sir, on regarding the, the tennis courts?
Yeah, just quickly, Ron Ono, Admin Services Manager. The tennis court, um, proposal and the Angel proposal was pretty much a swap agreement. We don't pay each other. We have joint use of both sites. And, um, the, this, the Angel Park, it was a McKinley school site at one time. Uh, and the Tennis Center is our city reservoir. So we've, we've allowed each other the rights to use those sites. Uh, we had, I believe, a 25-year, uh, agreement. The agreement has expired and we, we're on a month-to-month. Uh, we did have a, uh, amendment or an extension approved by our city council and submitted to the board. We thought was a great amendment. It, uh, at, at, just recently, we, the, we got a response that there's some changes on it to shorten the time period. And I forgot what the time period is, five years, and it got changed to one year. So that needs to go back to our council to decide whether we would like to do a one-year agreement. You know, how long it takes to get certain things approved here in the, in the city. So one year will go by fast. So I, you know, I strongly recommend we at least do a five-year. But that's the, that's the dilemma we're in now because of the change, uh, from the, from the district side.
Board Member Amesco.
So can you tell us a little bit about, what do you use Angel Park for as a city?
Angel Park is used as a typical neighborhood park site. Uh, it's got a basketball court, it's got a, uh, athletic feel on it, it's got a restroom on it, it's got some picnic areas on it. Uh, we, at this point, have no plans of changing the exact use of that site. Uh, we are going to wanna go through a master plan process. That may change it, I'm not sure. But it's also used by the county staff. They play soccer on that site. So it's, it's a well-used park site. You, you're right. It does have a homeless problem issue. Um, and we ask the whole cult team to address it periodically. Uh, and, uh, but, but it's a well-used park site.
So I, I, and I, I thank you for your information, but, um, I know as a district, we're looking at it because, um, there are lots of homeless people in there, lots of drug activity, um, very close to a school site, and it could be used by our school site as well. Um, so I would, I highly recommend that our staff get together and have a discussion about the use of Angel Park and then bring it back to the council and the school board. Um, because I, I, I do see soccer sometimes we played. I see local kids. I drive by it every single day, at least three times a day, at all hours. Um, and so there's a need for park space in our city. And I don't know too many families that go there to barbecue because the homeless are there and they pretty much overrun the park. And so, and I don't have a problem with homeless. I'm not asking you to take them out. So I don't want anybody to leave here and saying that I'm being a NIMBY. What I'm looking at is park space for our children and our families. It's very important that we have park space that they can use, um, safely. So it is something that we're discussing, so we'll need to come back to you as a council 'cause we have not, as a board, approved another 10 or 25-year lease. We're discussing it as a board.
I, I think Mr. Ono was talking about a five-year agreement, but.
We're not even, we're not even there yet.
Yeah. Uh, well, uh, any of my colleagues would wish to comment? I, for one, play soccer on that field, lunchtime, county, when I was assigned there for years. I know they use it quite a bit, Tuesdays and Thursdays. I don't know if you go by there Tuesdays, Thursday, between 12 and 1, you get a good workout for about an hour. With the local, uh, residents that come there that work at night, we all would meet and we work out there. And then also the county people come out and, uh, a lot of in the buildings right there, 320 and 300 Flower. And the sheriff's department across the street on the other side, they use those basketball courts too. So I, I, I'm not sure exactly what you're conveying here, but I know a lot of people that use that park.
I'm not conveying anything other than the city lacks park space for our community. And there's a lot of drugs and homeless people that, there. And there are very few families that are there to barbecue. When you talked about those picnic benches, um, during the day. If you go there in the evenings and on the weekends, um, at all hours. They can't use the bathrooms. Um, so again, it's a discussion that the school board is having, um, with our superintendent. And so it'll come back to you guys. We, you may have approved it, but we have not. And it's for, it's gonna be a bigger discussion, so I guess you wanna add it to the next meeting?
I would say let our staff speak to your staff. And see what, what they come up with and then.
We're also looking at it too for park space.
Got it, very good. Councilmember Solario?
You know, I, like any park, the dynamic during the day's gonna always shift. But, uh, I think though, you know, what, what they're getting at is that many parks of any day, uh, the parks overrun with homeless individuals. I mean, I, I drove by it on the way here and there's, I think, like four or five concrete tables that are nice and sturdy. They're all full and they're not kids. And there's no one studying there. There's no one playing soccer, there's no one playing basketball because it's extremely uninviting. That's just the reality. And I think whether the city's gonna use it or the school district's gonna use it, we need to, you know, se- secure it and make our parks more inviting. I mean, that's, that's the reality.
We agree with you.
Mr. Ono, just for clarification, just to understand the, um, the agreement related to Angel Park and the Tennis Center. Okay, so if I'm understanding it, the Angel Park is district?
Correct.
Land? And how about the Tennis Center?
It's city land.
Okay. So then if, if that's a city, then, then, then I would agree we should be having a conversation because I see it used more for our students, the Tennis Center, than it is by our community.
Yeah, you're correct. It's, um, a- at this point, we on a month-to-month on the, on that agreement because there is basically no agreement. So we're going on, onto a month-to-month. So if the agreement with, at the Angel Park is terminated, then there is no agreement on the, on the reservoir site, you know, at, at Neil Machander. But, but the, the school district actually proposed that agreement at Neil Machander because they needed tennis courts. And that's the only way they could actually build tennis courts for Santa Ana High School. And we agreed with it because, uh, we even paid for the lights on four courts uh, because we wanted to use it, uh, for activity at, at night. Uh, but we short-staffed, we couldn't man it. Uh, so, so the, the district has it, they are using it for their school students.
Which is, it's, it's a good use. I'm not.
It's a good use, yeah.
So then it's, it's a greater conversation, like you were saying. Because, I mean, the homeless issue is affecting all parts throughout the city. And it's something that I know that we've, we've addressed with our police department and also with, you know, with the supervisor. It's, it's, it's a greater conversation to be had. And I think when it comes to addressing the homeless, I think we should just have it, all of us coming together. I think, you know, the county, the city, the school district, and even the, um, branch.
Mr. Ono, you and I have been, you and I have known each other for a long time. And, uh, we're both young men when we first met each other. And.
I'm still young. But I'm younger.
And good hair still. It's looking good, Ron.
Good hair right there.
The, next time when we deal with the tennis courts, uh, I think it was the school district that put the infrastructure in so you could put the lighting in.
Correct.
We, we refinished all the tennis courts. And who put the, who built the tennis courts?
Uh, the district built the tennis courts.
And we put the infrastructure for the lighting, right?
And we put in the conduits for future lighting, yes.
Yeah, no, the district did, yeah.
But the city paid for the first four courts, the lights.
Yeah, and there's like 12, 16, something like that?
And this is, correct.
Yeah, and so, I mean, you don't lose sight of the fact that we put money into it as well.
Well, it's not your money, it's the constituents' money. So it's everybody's money, public's money.
So I just have one question.
Board Member Amesco.
Um, it doesn't matter to me whose money it is, it's a matter that we use it, right? So it's for our constituents and our community. So, um, Mr. Ono, um, if we had, did not come to an agreement, we would just rent the tennis courts from the city, correct? Under the joint use? Under Civic Center, excuse me?
If you don't have an agreement, then the city and the district would have to negotiate the use of those courts.
That's correct. But, but Angel Park could still come back to the school district and we would just negotiate use of the tennis courts.
That's correct.
Correct? Okay, great. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number five, the city homeless issue. I have one speaker, Mr. Ted Moreno. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Moreno. Um, thank you, board. Actually, I was asked to speak by, um, our president at the PTSO for Godenas High School. Um, actually, the government liaison's, um, representing the parents at Godenas High School. Um, hold on, I'm just trying to bring up my text, um, what Lisa specifically wanted me to speak on.
Well, we're looking through it. I had to, you know, look two or three times at you. I didn't recognize you with that beard, so thank you, thank you for identifying yourself.
I'm just looking more beautiful as I get older. Um, bottom line, I can't find what Lisa asked me. She, she's asking us as the parents, um, are concerned, um, representing the parents of Godenas High School and the children of Godenas High School, that that homeless shelter that they're planning, um, just about 10 minutes from Mitchell School, 10 minutes probably from Godenas. planning, just about 10 minutes from Mitchell School, 10 minutes probably from Godinez, it's a little bit too close to our children. I know you guys have your hands tied when it comes to regulations, trying to put homeless people in specific areas, but still, I mean, we need to think about where we're going to place them. And I think having them close to a high school, we're talking about issues about the park, having homeless in the park. Well, if you're going to have a homeless shelter just 10 minutes away or less, what do you think they're going to accumulate when they're not at the shelter? They're going to be accumulating at the park. And it's kind of defeating the purpose of trying to improve the park, but then we're putting a shelter so close. And so, we want to put our voice in as the parents of Godinez that we're against this shelter going in so closely. I know it takes a long time to try to figure out another location, but please, help to support us from both sides, the school board and the city, and look for a different location because it's too close to the elementary school, which a lot of, a lot of the kids there are special needs, my understanding, have Mitchell's handicap, so it's not like some of those kids will be able to run away from individuals if they're chasing them down. So, but that's our opinion. As, I'm sorry if I'm going to speak about the other issues, just to let you know, the concern about charging at the park, and that was our issue we brought forward. The parents were the ones that asked to change the joint use issue, as, you know, you might not have been sitting in those meetings. And one of the issue was for us to be able to charge as Godinez, but I think part of the issue was also, we weren't going to charge any of the kids from the Santa Ana Unified School District if they're going to be using that. It's more of the people that are coming in from outside the community that are going to use the facilities and are going to use the parking lot. It was the way of Godinez to be able to make extra money, to be able to use it in other areas around the school. So it wasn't something that they all of a sudden did because they thought of it. It was us, as the parents, said, hey, we want to change this, this is one of the issues we want to change. So this was more parents initiated than school initiated, so keep that in mind when you're addressing the issue in the future. The other thing, I came back from St. Louis just a couple weeks ago, and I was at, running a marathon, the marathon started at this park called Forest Park, my understanding is like the second largest park in the United States, probably about eight to 10 times larger than Centennial Park. Afterwards, Teddy and myself, we went later on to go visit the park because that's where they had the zoo, they had the museums there. Did not charge one single penny to go into the museum or to go into the zoo. Not one point that I feel I was unsafe as we were walking through that park, being that huge, being the size of most Central Park. It was safe, the line of sight of everywhere was easy to see where you're at. You didn't feel uncomfortable and you're saying, oh, they don't have an homeless issue. Yeah, they do, but it would seem like it was more concentrated maybe around downtown because every time, when we walked out of the stadium to go see the St. Louis game, we're being hit up, hey, can you give us a little bit of money here, give us a little bit of money there? So they do have issues, they have economic issues, but that park was immaculate, it was well taken care of, and that's what I want to see in the future, where we can see our parks. And the issue about Angel Park, yeah, it is an issue, I'm sorry, I drive by up and down Flower, and it's a homeless issue. I mean, in the past, yeah, it felt like it was safe, you used to see families there. Now, you just see homeless there. And, I'm sorry, I don't want to be politically correct by calling them homeless, I'm sorry, I call them more of a drug issue because if they weren't so much drug affected, they wouldn't be homeless. We keep calling them homeless, but they're homeless because they're addicted to drugs. You get rid of that issue, you might get rid of the issue of them being homeless. So, and that's the problem where our community might feel unsafe because of that. So, other than that, sorry, just wanted, and I love both of you, just get along, please. We're not trying to point here and there, I mean, I remember they were always saying if women basically ruled the world, it'd be a nicer place. When I see both of you going at it, I mean, I know you guys have issues from the past, but just love each other, you know? I love both of you, I respect both of you, and you guys could at least have that, at least respect for each other. You guys are powerful women in this community, and respect that with each other and learn to get along that way, so.
Thank you. Can you imagine how powerful we'd be if we could get along?
I know.
Right?
My sentiment too.
Thank you, Ted.
Yeah, yeah, parance.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Okay, so I have Hafsa Keika from the city of Santa Ana is going to give us a brief update on the Yale Street property.
Good evening, everyone, committee members, council members. I'm Hafsa Keika, homeless service manager. So I think at last week's council meeting, deputy chief of police, Kaminsky, did an excellent job talking about the etiology of the Yale site. So I definitely, you know, would like to resonate the facts in terms of the update. So here are the facts. We were, the city council, the previous city council directed staff to negotiate a memorandum of agreement or understanding with the county to relocate the courtyard emergency shelter. And this was back in fall of last year. And what preceded that was the city council also resolving an emergency shelter crisis for the entire city. What preceded that was back in March where we found and did a point-in-time count that there was an unprecedented number of homeless individuals in the city of Santa Ana. And what preceded that was the fact that there were many shelter, or actually, people experiencing homelessness that traveled from different parts of the county. So what the city decided to do back in November is commence the Link Shelter, right? And that was really great because we were able to decipher essentially how many individuals experiencing homelessness came from the city of Santa Ana. We have our transparent data dashboard, and as of today, 182 individuals are enrolled at the Link. That means that those 182 people are actually from the city of Santa Ana. So now, we have been able to see how many individuals have came from the city and that are vetted by our deputy chiefs and our Santa Ana Police and HART program and CULT program versus those that are not. So here you've got the courtyard emergency shelter. And the reason that the city council had directed staff was to really address the lack of shelter beds for the city of Santa Ana. The courtyard emergency shelter is 425 beds, and that's not all for the city of Santa Ana. And of course, that negotiations, all of that proceeded, my starting here, so I don't have the full history on that. But with the court, with this transition of the courtyard emergency shelter, it was to increase the lack of shelter beds for the city of Santa Ana, it was to mitigate the impact in the community here in downtown and also the schools that's across the way in downtown, and to move to a more suitable location. And then also, it was to ensure that part of the negotiation would stop the armory program that happens at the cold weather, in the winter times. So with that being said, that was essentially the facts that we have. We were lucky to be able to secure over $3.5 million from the homeless emergency aid program that the state funneled through to help secure 125 beds for people experiencing homelessness in Santa Ana in this large courtyard shelter. That said, the Link is going to dissolve in less than two years. And we now know that there is 182 people who are enrolled. So the idea was to be able to secure additional 125 beds and to streamline the referrals that were coming into the courtyard to the central service planning area. Essentially, council had directed, let's try to mitigate more individuals coming from other parts of the county. So really, that was the factual information that we were guided, and that's the update of the courtyard transition to the emergency shelter. As you saw in the council meeting, Supervisor Doe provided a letter, or provided a letter to be spoken for by CEO Frank Kim as to where the county is. It's important to know that we will not be operating this shelter, it's a shelter that will be operated by the county, but as partners, we highly encourage them to follow suit for the Link. The Link has been recognized as a national best practice, it was on Western Cities magazines, the cover, and more so than that, as of today, 27 individuals who were out on the streets are connected to permanent housing. That means that an individual who came in pregnant eight months was provided safety and her child was born in safety. That means 40 families that have literally been out on the streets are now housed in a safe place. And that also means that there is a continuum of care. So folks that were in the parks were outreach by our Santa Ana Police in partnership with healthcare agency workers, moved from the park and into the shelter and then connected to permanent housing. I will also say that we have worked very strategically with our housing authority to additionally provide more housing opportunities. So we're hoping that this shelter, once it gets transitioned, will follow the suit of the Link Shelter.
Thank you, Ms. Hafsa. Does anyone have a question?
I have a number of questions.
Mr. Palacios?
You know, those of you who worked here, but I know Citi was there, and I think Valerie had just got elected, you know, we talked about partnerships. So you remember Kennedy Elementary, where the city cut a private deal with the county to put a homeless shelter about 500 feet from Kennedy Elementary School? The city promised us that in the future, that they would work with us, to tell us of these confidential plans or agreements that the city has with the county. It didn't happen, didn't happen when you were looking at 3900 West Central, it didn't happen with Yale that currently being proposed, and it should happen. If we're partners, you should know what our opinions are. And the problem is, is the way we're approaching, it's kind of like what's happening in the county. Basically, cities got together and said, look, I don't want to build a shelter, but you, Palacios, and you want a park, we want to build one, we'll pay, we'll offset your costs, your operating costs. So there's a lot of private deals that are happening that we need to be part of that because it impacts our agreement. If you look at your September 4th, 2018, your agenda item, it says it's not to be near parks, not to be schools, not to be residential areas, and not to be near sensitive areas, okay? You talked about a sanctuary, well, I think for the bird, was it birds or? Yeah, that's a sensitive area, right? The whole area around Heritage Museum is sensitive. And so, I raise that issue because, you know, Santa Ana has done more than its fair share, okay? We have been dumping, I think Solario has said that publicly for a long time. You've got, you've got treatment centers from all over the country, they pay for their plane flight, they come here, they exhaust their insurance, and they throw them out in the streets, okay? You've got public agencies, including law enforcement from other cities, that, hey, here's your one-way ticket, here's to Santa Ana. You have your parolees or people who are out of jail, they drop them off downtown in Santa Ana, they have nowhere to go, they do them at midnight. You have, well, we've done it for sure, look, the armory will never go away, it's been there for decades, okay? So we have an armory. We have the transitional center, you call it the Link, I guess, is that what you call it? Okay, that'll be temporary until you build a permanent one. We have the Salvation Army, that we have units that were built. We have housing for the homeless veterans that the city is approving. My point is that we're doing our fair share. The young woman who, you've got a difficult job, politically, probably one of the most difficult jobs one can do, but you had said something real important that really struck in my mind, is that you don't need 600 beds, why do we need 600 beds? Why should the school district, I mean, the city bear 600 more beds when you add the beds from the army during emergency, when you add the Salvation Army, the housing for the homeless veterans? We don't need 600 beds. There is not one place we have two, three times the number of beds that have been in that particular facility than anywhere in the county. In fact, I would argue that that 600 beds is equal to what the whole county is doing currently right now. We should not bear that result. Now, the reason we raise these issues is because of the fact schools, you're .4 miles from our schools. You know, we have Mitchell, you have, you have, we have a lot of our schools. If you look at this map, I've been here a long time with Mr. O'Neal. This, the people who are using the park beside their kids during the day, at night and weekend, a lot of them are adults. Because, you know, the soccer fields, damn soccer, I believe it's all adult soccer, right? Is that a fair way of looking at it?
Yes.
How much of that soccer field is adult?
Hello? Hello?
The damn young soccer.
I don't have the percentage, but it's youth and adult that use the different fields, the synthetic and also the natural grass as well. Yes, so we have a variety.
But a good chunk of the, your lighting facilities...
Yeah, it's mainly adult, you know, we have one youth field and three adult fields, and in terms of just overall activity, because also during the school days, you know, kids are in school and weekends are busy too, so it's predominantly adult.
Jeanie, if you could state your name for the record?
It's primarily adult.
Oh, my name is Jeanie, who are the communities versus manager for recreation.
Thank you.
And then, young soccer field is one where you do charge to get in, by the way, and it's fenced.
I'm sorry, Mr. Palacios, did you say the soccer field is fenced?
Yes.
And they charge to get in?
Yeah, once, when you have events, they're charged.
Let's stick to the homeless.
No, 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 I'm getting to, I'm giving you the picture. So if right now, we have a lot of adult activities, I mean, I went to the softball game today, I went to watch Godinez, and they won, by the way, and they're one game away and then be in the playoffs. But I was talking to some of the parents, and they were telling me there was, sometime there was a game, and there were adults out in the outfield, out there having sex, in front of the parents, in front of the kids, this is near side of the park, I mean, out there, closer towards the, to the ring, okay? So there is a lot of activities here. And so, you're going to compound it when you put 600 homeless within, less than a four tenths of a mile away. And then it's the security issues, you have one and a half persons assigned 24/7, that's not enough, you've got 50 parks, right? So, you know, so when we talk about security, you fence your soccer fields, you fence your skateboard park, okay, for security reasons. Well, we're asking you, if you're agreeing and not involved in the district to do a homeless shelter, what are you going to do to provide security to our kids? If we can't maintain what we have today, if we had a lockdown, how are you going to do it when you've got 600 homeless hanging around? And I say that because it's a very real, real problem, and I don't know what the answer is, and that's why, you know, you've got a very difficult job. Politically, it's, you're in a no-win situation. But I do think that Santa Ana has done more than its fair share. It's time for the other cities to do that. And let me close, there is not, if you go to Irvine, Tustin, Costa Mesa, and who's the other school or district? All of them had homeless shelters next to their schools. And the council said no. And we're saying to you, we're not part of your plans, you're putting in our laps, you know, you said you were going to help us and work with us whenever that opportunity came, because here, here's what it comes down to, you have a common interest, both the city and the county, across the street from the homeless shelter downtown, the bus transportation, what's there? The administration building where the county board of supervisors exist, and across the street on the other side, that's where the city council is. You don't want them near you. So we don't want them near our kids. Real simple.
Okay, I remember, let's see, when we went to the county, remember when the county was going to do the shelter in Irvine? Miss, Board Member Masco, I saw you there, I saw Councilmember Iglesias there when she was on the board, Councilmember Solario, and myself, the four of us were down there to speak, and I think the doctor was there also, I'm not sure, and staff, we all went to speak to the county to tell them to stick by the MOU and honor it, and so they wouldn't bring the shelter here, to at least, you know, commit them to doing something down south. And that didn't happen. I remember Supervisor Doe was out of town at the time also. He's been trying, give him credit, but that board doesn't exist anymore, they've got two new members on there, so, you know, you gotta, gotta start all over again. Reason that the county's doing the shelter, you know, they have to do something with the courtyard. But Santa Ana had to do something because we weren't able to enforce our no camping laws because we were being sued in federal court. And I was in federal court just the other day, we have to do something. The Yale Street is part of the settlement that we have. If not, we're going to get sued for millions of dollars, and the previous council voted on it to go ahead and do it. Our plan originally was to sue everyone in the county, then it turned out it was just way too expensive to hold everyone accountable. I feel like Councilmember Iglesias, the same way, a lot of us feel the same way, maybe as you. We want to force, we would wish for all the other cities to participate and do something and follow our lead with doing something about the homeless issue. But I, we have homeless here, and I have to address that, or we have to address, this council has to address that. We were the ones being sued. The school district wasn't being sued, we were being sued, and we had to step up and do what we have to do. And so with that, we have an average of 200, I believe, arrests or citations a month enforcing our no camping laws. We have 120, 180-something people over at the, at the Link, where we have zero complaints, zero from the neighbors. They're all brought in and they're all escorted out. We also, I believe, have 20 children... We also, I believe, have 20 children over there. I don't know what we're going to do, I don't know if you heard me, we have 20 children in that facility. I went over there and breaks my heart to see them. What am I going to do with them? We're doing our best. This is a very, very touchy situation. It's, you know, there's no right answer for everything. We can do a wish list, but the reality is, you know, we're doing our best, and the county is helping us, and we, this is their facility, there's going to be community outreach. They were already, in Supervisor Doe's letter to the council, was that he was stopping the construction until we could do some community outreach and get some input, and I understand. But we are leasing beds from them, some bed space. You know, it's a lot of folks to be in one spot, but it's going to be operated similar to the Link, where they're brought in and they're escorted out. I also had a conversation with Board Member Amesqua the other day, that my personal commitment to help with security, to make sure, because I know everyone has a concern, but nobody wants them in their backyard. And we were being sued. And we had to make a decision, and that's what we're, all of us here on both sides of the table, you know what that's like, to take a tough position on something. And sometimes it's not popular. We wish, you know, we weren't in that predicament, but the reality is this.
But we ask you to talk to us.
Yeah, well, and that's why I reached out to, you know, Board Member Amesqua. And we had a conversation with the county.
So let me give, as we've been talking, and it'll be, it'll come up in Tuesday's board meeting, I think where Mr. Palacio is stating is that, were you on the council when we, I know Ms. Iglesias was on the school board with us, and we had come to the city council, and we said, "Please bring us to the table before you make decisions." And that never occurred, as you know, when we had our discussion the other day. It's never come before us. Nobody ever asked us. So when you were being, when you were going to go out and sue every city, Dr. Phillips and I met with the city manager at that time, and he said, you know, "Can you guys join us? Can't take money from our kids for a lawsuit, get it? But we're going to, we'll support you in the sense that we're going to be there, we'll have community meetings with our parents." Then we never heard anything again. So we're back to the same issue, right? We have a meeting, and then there's no follow-through. And so I think when you and I talked about too, our concern is the safety of Godenas' children. How do we secure, and this is the conversation we're going to always have, how do we secure and keep our kids safe? I'm sorry, can you come back up to the microphone so you don't have to scream from your chair?
Sure.
You said something that I think is what caught Mr. Palacio's attention. How many are from the city of Santa Ana at the Link?
So at the Link, currently, we have 182 enrolled.
That are from Santa Ana?
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's called.
So I've been there a few times, but I want to know, 182?
As of today.
So that are from Santa Ana. So I think Mr. Palacio's point is that if 182 are at the Link that are from Santa Ana, I guess why do we need 600 beds at the other place? And so I know you'll address that, so give me a minute there. So, and then you talked about residential. There's no residence, residential properties around the Link. None whatsoever. You're talking about the one on the Tustin borderline?
Correct. It's industrial.
Yeah, it's all industrial. So across the street, they're building, and when they build homes over there, I think they're building homes?
I don't.
They're building something, it's called the Legacy. Tustin Legacy, so they're homes. When those homes go up, that's not going to be there anymore because you're paying a million dollars for those homes. I can guarantee you that Link's not going to be there because they're not going to want them there. And the reason you can't see them, nobody complains, is because they're covered. They're covered by fence, right? So I mean, there's a lot of different reasons why they're not complaining, and I'm not disagreeing. And again, it's a problem everywhere. And the presentations you were talking about, it would be great if you can come, and we've asked a couple times if you can come, not you specifically, but somebody from the city, and share at a school board meeting, because we do have parents that are asking us, "What are you doing about this? What are you doing? How are you addressing this? We don't want this near our schools." Mr. Palacio, can you hand me that paper right there that I just gave you? Yes. So if you look at this, and I think Mr. Williams gave you guys all a copy, here is the 600-bed facility, here are our schools, .4, .6, it's by six schools, very close. We are not saying that we won't work together, we're saying, and when Mayor Protem Viegas and I had a meeting, it was, "You need to bring us to the table as a district." Because if you're holding community meetings, we'll invite our parents to come out so that everybody understands, you can't have secret meetings, we can't have you having meetings and we don't know anything about it. And I think that's the challenge that we have as a district, is that we're not saying we're not supportive, what we're saying is, nobody's having conversation with us. Nobody. And now we've had one meeting, which I'll be sharing with the rest of the board, and the superintendent will be on Tuesday, but nobody has brought us to the table since that very, again, that last meeting we had with the city manager, which was...
That was before Christmas.
Yeah, a long time ago, again, and so, and then we went to the county meeting. After that, it was like, okay, we're going to bring the school district to the table. And then you guys, it came out, you guys are opening a 600-bed facility by Godenas High School and by six other schools. So it is not that we are not willing to work, it is about our students and our families. And so you're going to hear from them, we're going to hear from them at the school board. We welcome them, and we're going to hear from them when we have community meetings, which we're going to be starting as well. I think we had talked about that, and the superintendent will be arranging them at our school sites. But they're not going to be nice meetings, they're not going to be parents that come and say, "Oh yeah, we want to welcome them." It's going to be, what are you going to do to protect our kids and our families? And so somebody, you said somebody was having sex, I mean, you can drive down the street or go to that school, and you see all kinds of funky things happening at that park, and pretty much throughout the entire city. We're not going to resolve it, but we can't help you or work with you if we're not at the table. And again, your job is citywide, your constituents, our job are our schools and our students to protect them. And right now, I can tell you that I don't feel, as a board member, that Godenas is secure, or Mitchell, or any of those other schools. So we do have to come up with a plan. I think that's what you're expressing in the superintendent, we've all talked about it, and we talked about it as well.
Yes, I mean, we had a good meeting.
Yes.
And you know me personally, and when I give my word, I'm in all the way. I want to help, my daughter goes to Santa Ana Unified School District, I'm very proud to say she's a senior, going to graduate this year. And, you know, when I think about her, and I think about all the other kids, it's the same thing. I'm a parent too, of the children that attend those schools, and, but right now, we have the courtyard at the Civic Center with 400 and something people, and it doesn't even have walls around it, and it's tough to regulate, and they have people hanging outside, it's pretty, you know, dirty, some of the sidewalks. You have naked people, look, I worked down there in the Civic Center for years, since 1989, footpeat, walking that place, I know it like the back of my hand, and I know about the drugs and naked people and people defecating, you know how it was before we were able to do any of this. Remember what happened with the riverbed issue? We were starting to enforce our laws here, and they moved to the riverbed. That blew up, and then everything, we had to do something. And if you look at the Civic Center, now we've made some progress, and we plan on having that change.
I'm not sure though, we've made progress. I think they've gone underground and they're moving.
Well, we're enforcing our no camping laws, it's not going to get fixed overnight, and it didn't happen overnight. You know, since 1989 was different. You had day labor areas and people that did drugs and people that have mental health issues and, and so, but the county is trying to address it, and that's what they're doing, picking a spot, we're working together to try to do it. We have a great model at the Link, and it's probably going to be even better because they hear they want to put a clinic in there.
Yeah.
And treat, and take people, bring people in, take people out. And I know the supervisor's expressed to me that he has great concern for the students and the residents around there, but we have to do something. We're in court.
Tell them to put it in Garden Grove.
Well, you can tell them to do that all day long, but, you know, you want to...
That's where he lives.
Thank you so much, Mr. Amesqua. Definitely noted, and I'll follow up with our city manager on the...
So listen, for us sitting here, trying to compel other cities to do something, you know, they're going to just tie you up in court. I've heard it all, where they're going to get rid of the judge, they're going to ask for a change of venue, they're going to do all these different things. I live in now, and we have to do something now. Do you want to get tied up in court where we're not going to be able to enforce our no camping laws? And it's going to go back to the Wild West again. At least right now, it's being addressed. And our police department, you heard, has been overwhelmed with calls regarding the homeless issue. That's the reality of it. This is what's going on right now, this is part of the settlement. And that's why, you know, I can, I'm a one-step-at-a-time type of person. If this is what we can do right now to fix it and then move on, because I like to see down the road, great. But we have other cities that have recently stepped up that have opened up shelters also. And there's a couple of them that I can't talk about that are coming up also, and you'll be a little surprised, but not at liberty to discuss that. So that is the update on that. If there's anyone, anyone else has a comment? Councilmember Iglesias, and then Solorio?
Okay. Hafsa, I do have a question for you, for Yale. Okay, it's obvious that the school district wasn't contacted to have discussions or anything in the preliminary discussions, right?
Nothing.
That was my understanding. And the, for the Yale Street, I know we're trying to close down the courtyard, and the courtyard are pretty much all residents, I don't even think they're from Orange County, they're coming from outside of Orange County. But we have about 430-some, right?
About 425.
Okay. And then all we're doing is relocating them to Yale.
Correct. That's what the memorandum of agreement is stating, to transition the current individuals living in the courtyard to a more suitable site.
Yeah. So, and I would have to agree with Mr. Palacio with this issue. I just feel it's something that the city has done its fair share. And I voiced it at the meeting last time on Tuesday, and I know Supervisor Doe, he's stalling or he's stopping construction until we have those meetings. But I would ask that we also, as a school district, and I'll be more than happy to join you guys, to go before the board of supervisors, to go and really express to them our discontent of, you know, having this site in Santa Ana. Because I do agree Supervisor Doe does represent other cities, not just Santa Ana, he represents, like you were saying, Garden Grove, you know, Westminster, and, you know, everybody could pitch in. And I get frustrated when, when you, not you per se, but when there's a reference to the Link. Link only has not even 200, and you're thinking of having 600. It's not the same thing at all. And at the Link, like you were saying, it's all industrial, and it's not only fenced in, but I think it's also like with the screen, you really can't even see inside. So I, so it's not the same thing.
I think that when staff defer to the Link speaking about this project is to really, and also the county, is to really say that the Link has emerged as a best practice and that the city is going to be holding the county accountable to function as the Link, not as the courtyard. And we all know the courtyard is not even low barrier, as DC Kaminsky says, "It's no barrier." And so the city is saying, "You know what?" And the county has referenced it as well, Supervisor Doe said it himself, that we anticipate to have it operating like the Link. So it really tries to peril the fact that it's going to be different, and as Protem measured, there's even talks about having a FQHC medical clinic to help service individuals who are experiencing mental health and substance abuse as well.
But also, I think when we talked about the one at Kennedy, right? I think they said that the most we can have is 200. I think for the zoning, I think it's only 200 capacity.
Actually, it's 400 is the capacity according to your zoning requirements.
Yeah, so then why are we even allowing this city? I think with that, I think it's a conversation to be had because we can't have more than, I believe it's 200. I think that that's the zoning for where we're at with Yale. And so, yeah, so why are we even increasing it three times the amount? So I don't know if that's something that we could coordinate to go...
We were going to, we're going to raise that issue.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you've already exceeded what's already, you legally can permit within your own zoning.
Correct.
You already exceeded it. Your proposal exceeds it.
So I think that's a conversation to have with the supervisor and his staff, and then also hold the other cities accountable, the other four supervisors, because yeah, Supervisor Doe is trying his best. But I think if we show him support, that we're going to fight with him to ensure that Santa Ana is not, is no longer the dumping ground, I think he would feel more comfortable in addressing his colleagues on that board. But, you know, I would have to agree with you, and security and all those things with the homeless, I mean, those are things that we've already brought up as a community, and it's not right, because it's not only Godenas, but you have Mitchell there too, you know, really close. And then you have also the Heritage Museum, that I know they're very concerned. And one thing that one of the ladies brought up on Tuesday, she was, actually, she's a homeless individual herself, she gave her testimony at the last meeting. She mentioned to me that the, right in front of where the Yale homeless shelter is being proposed, there's also a business there that has like cheerleading camps or something like that, and then so there's always a young, you know, young girls out there. And then she was saying, you know, they already have issues with males, you know, guys checking them out. Now imagine having the homeless right in front of it. I think that's just waiting something to happen, and it's, I think if anything, we should try to prevent it.
Thank you.
You took my thunder away from the maximum capacity.
Okay.
But also in your zoning, I'll give you credit, you're the only city that has a 500-foot buffer. But let me remind you what 500 feet is. In my neighborhood, I live in Morrison Park, each home is 90, each home is 90 feet deep, 60 foot wide. That's eight houses. That's not even a block. In my block, which is a regular block, north and south on Lowell Lane, that's 11 houses. That means that it's only eight houses away. That's not enough. That's not enough. But I'll give you credit. You're the only city that has that, that buffer. But that buffer is meaningless because it's eight houses away, in simple terms. But the capacity, you are in violation of your own capacity, that I can tell you.
Councilmember Solorio?
Thank you. We, I think what we can all agree on is the courtyard doesn't work either. We don't want the courtyard to be the way it is now for too many more years, it's temporary, meant to be temporary. The county theoretically has sovereign immunity power, so they can build whatever they want on land that they have. But that's not to say that in a case like this, because we do have a memorandum of understanding that we can't revisit things or discuss things, et cetera, where I have been recently having some frustration myself is, number one, when we did the MOU, the circumstances were different. Now we do have cities like Costa Mesa, even Huntington Beach, and one or two others that have, that have started building their own shelter, so should we do an additional 600 ourselves? Maybe, maybe not, we're with them. You know, we also have the Link, and the quick retort that I'll hear sometimes from folks inside City Hall is, "Well, that's why we need the 200 beds over there." I'm all, well, you know, I may agree with you because we do want to enforce our laws, but if that's so important, then you got to make sure the MOU says that, because right now, the MOU does not say that. The MOU, number one, doesn't say 200 beds, that we would have some kind of rights over, it says 125 beds. So for starters, we're short there. And then they want to charge us for those beds, by the way, whereas right now, really, at least at the courtyard, the residents that are from Santa Ana, they're, they're for free. And so I wonder whether, number one, it needs to be 600, probably not. 200 tends to be more of a best practice. The MOU also said that we're supposed to be working with the county on an operating agreement so that it can operate the way that we might like. It's my understanding, the city's in the past actually has been reaching out to start working on that, and they've refused to take meetings on it. So again, we got to get back to the table on that so that we're comfortable. And even there, they have the upper hand, it says we'll work on an operating agreement together, but if there's disagreement, they get to call the shot on it. So what that is, is very significant as to whether we're going to like it or not. If it is like, you know, the Link, or like Bridges at Kramer and smaller size, okay, that's one thing, but if it's a completely different thing, then that's not a good thing. And then finally, and I kind of referenced it a little bit, you know, the idea is to the idea is to move all the folks from the courtyard somewhere else. But right now, we don't pay anything for the supposed, let's say, a third to half that might be from Santa Ana, or that can, you know, some history with Santa Ana. None of the other counties, we don't pay for having folks in there. Now, they wanna charge, start charging us. For sure for the 125 or so extra. But even through just an annual, an annual price agreement for helping maintain and operate the facility, I think it's gonna be at least a million bucks. Well, I've started to ask, well, why should we pay if no other city's paying? Are we gonna send Garden Grove a bill, Fountain Valley a bill, Huntington Beach a bill, South County Cities a bill? No, so for us to not to raise that issue with the county would be a disservice, you know, from a financial standpoint with, with our constituents. I had this conversation with CEO Frank Kim about six months ago, that we do need to revisit that, because that isn't appropriate. And, you know, if we shrink it down, then maybe they don't need to start charging us. But, you know, there's some fairness issues on top of everything else. So I think for those reasons, you know, Councilwoman Iglesias had raised some concerns, and that's why I also had to help put that item on, to share our frustrations, because even though there's a need, they have to be done well. And, you know, it's really, the county is the lead agency. So really, I'm not even sure why we're genociding this. They should be here presenting their proposal, but they or we, we're all in it together. And, you know, we do need to, you know, work more collaboratively with you on this. Thank you.
Juan, can I?
Board Member Amesqua.
Solorio, you're absolutely right. But when you factor what our needs are, we have the Salvation Army. They have X amount of seats that the city approved, in terms of permanent. Remember you had temporary on Eddinger, and then, then they did the permanent ones on, on, on Second Street, where, where the, the drug treatment center is located next door? Then you have the Army, never go away. Army has been there since nineteen, the 40s.
What's in the agreement that would go away when we relocate, but, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, and then, so my, my point is, we, we gotta look at what we're already doing. Then no other city, everybody talks about Anaheim. Well, Anaheim's only 100, right? I mean, we're talking 600, and...
What other city is being sued?
I don't, that...
Several, and we ourselves were never sued on this side. And we asked to be joined in, because we're gonna have to be a part of it.
So we're gonna go in circles here, you know, but I hear what you're saying.
It's a safety issue. You know, people don't wanna...
And I agree.
Secure Centennial Park. Well, Centennial Park's gonna, if you've got a problem now, you've got a greater problem later on with them.
Right.
But we shouldn't have 600. You're, you are in violation of your maximum capacity. That I can tell you.
We're gonna work it out. That's what I, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
In every private deal...
Nothing is perfect.
Yeah, and every private deal the county has cut, and up north then, the costs are being shared by other cities. That's the, the plan for Placentia and Buena Park, all the surrounding cities. Hey, you put it there, and we'll, we'll help you cover the costs.
Board Member Amesqua?
So I just wanna clarify, the reason that it's on the agenda is the district's request, because, again, we need to be at the table. And so when Mayor Protem and I met, and I've been sharing with Dr. Phillips what we're doing as far as just talking, that's why we wanted to bring, so we could be very transparent and say, "We need to be at the table."
But that's the county as well, it's not just us.
No, no, no. We're, believe me, we're having conversations with the county as well. But we need to be working with each other, because we can help each other. Because, you know, we keep saying, well, the county can, you know, they can pretty much, pretty much what we're, what we're hearing is, well, the county can do whatever they want. Well, it's a very powerful thing when you have a couple thousand people show up at a county meeting and say, "No, you're not doing it, not in my backyard." So we may not need to bus in 20 buses like Irvine did, but we can surely round up our community to go to a county meeting. And I'll, I'm pretty sure betting dollars to donuts, they'll stop what they're doing and say, "Okay, wait a minute. Let's, let's go back and have these community meetings." Because that's why now we're having community meetings, because nobody was talking about it. No, it was like a secret. And so, that's why it's on the agenda, because we're not saying we wanna stop. But what we're saying is, we need to work together. And we need to have the agreement that we had a year ago. They, or I don't know how long it's been there, Mr. Palacio, but that we would, we would have conversation and work with each other. And so this is the start. And so that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
One more question, one more question, Mr. Solorio. SB 2 passed, probably the year, mid, mid 2000s. And it was designed in a way for cities to create zoning and to facilitate housing for the homeless, okay? So it's your zoning, because remember, the county is a state entity. I don't know if you know that. They're subject to state law. They're subject to the Senate Bill 2. So if we have a local ordinance that has limitations, they're subject to it.
That's why we'll have to bring legal on board. Thank you, everyone. This is, that was the update for item number five. We're gonna move on to, we have some comments here. One last speaker, Joyce, and last name Lee?
Lynn.
Lynn, okay, 'cause I can.
Hi, I'm Lynn Lee. I am the PTO secretary at Godenas High School. And I just, I wanted to reiterate the frustration that both sides have in not being able to come to resolution on some of the issues that we want to, been wanting to address. This is probably our, this, five of us came tonight hoping there'd be some resolution, and there isn't any. And just the nature of the beast is that, Mr. Church can maybe help me out here. There's, because of the bureaucracy that we have to go through, as, I'm talking as if I'm the principal, but I shouldn't be, so correct me if I'm wrong. But the nature of the beast is, you know, you come in, in the morning, and the baseball field's a mess, because it's been used by a city, the city had, you know, used it. And so, you know, what are we gonna do? Call the city and say, "Oh, can you come and send a janitor to clean it up?" No, we clean it up. Our janitors clean it up. Same thing happens with the gym and the theater, and over and over again. So the cost that we put into maintenance and cleaning is way over, I know this is joint agreement, it should be 50/50. It's way over 50% of what we have to put into it. And then, having to accommodate the city, oh, at the split second, you know, tomorrow, you have to change all your plans, 'cause the city has something planned. There's just a lot of problems with the joint use agreement. And we raised this, you know, over a year ago, and it was agreed upon. You know, both sides said, "Yes, this is an old joint use agreement that needs to be updated. This looks like a simple fix. Let's do it. Let's just get together, two intelligent people, you know, rewriting it." This is a year and a half now, I think. And it's just, frustration is up here. And I think that, you know, we have 150 PTO members that we have to go back and tell them, nothing came out of this meeting. So I'm really urging you to please, I, I think, get whoever is on your staff together to work this out, because it's, it's of an urgent matter right now. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Do we have any comments from, I think, our side here? Councilmember Solorio?
Some frustration, but progress, and that we're gonna meet more frequently, hopefully. So let's look forward to that, and having our incoming city manager work with Dr. Phillips and start meeting more regularly. And take issue by issues until we have resolution, because if not, we also keep introducing new things. Because I think maybe about a couple years ago when I joined the council, we also wanted to focus on some positive things, like Wi-Fi and, you know, more areas for our students and other technology opportunities growing, and partnership, our summer internship academies and other programs. And we gotta get to that too, but let's, you know, let's deal with the Godenas issues, because there's many, including the charge in the parking that Councilmember Iglesias talked about. But let's start making some progress, because I think, you know, we're all getting frustrated. But we wanna do right by our, our mutual constituents. Thank you.
Board Member Amesqua?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Vegas. I agree, we are gonna be meeting regularly, so I'm looking forward to that. But I, I do have one question, and, and maybe you can just get back to us. The cannabis money. And so, a portion of it was to go to education?
A third.
And so, yes, I wasn't gonna throw that number out, but yes, a third. And so, if you can somehow give us an update, what, what is happening with cannabis? It's up in smoke? Thank you, Mr. Palacio. I'm being totally serious. If you can give us an update, please, on the, on that funding, please.